All authority. I'm going to call to order the September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the I C S D Social Report of Education. Our first item is item two. Does England have a motion?
Oh, I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion regarding current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, employment history of a particular person, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person.
Okay, next question. It all was a big one. We return, uh, probably before seven. I think it might be a shorter executive session. We try to get back by seven. We have the agenda that needs to be. So I have three returns up session approval or modification attended agenda during thing, maybe no, nope, okay. Then we go straight to public comments. And, uh, Dr. Frantwell says I finally agreed to read names, uh, ask you a good brace. He doesn't know how to. So everyone's pronunciation.
I do. I'll do my best. Um, okay. Uh, the first person who signed up to speak tonight is Jeffrey Ames. Come on.
Yeah, I have.
You want to write your law?
Yeah, great. She's a chair. Always love.
Fifty fifty.
Good to go.
All right. Hello, my name is Jeff Ames and my wife is a teacher in the I C S D. Uh, from what I understand, there's a reason that we are here today in this room as opposed to the high school. I would like to start saying that the cowardly actions of certain board members a couple of weeks ago should be addressed in this setting, not through further cowardice in the form of faceless threats. Speaking of threats, last Friday morning, several areas schools received emails containing threats of violence. Despite the threats being deemed non-credible, Topkitts County law enforcement stepped up their presence around these schools throughout the day. While some of these districts acted out of an abundance of caution such as Dryden implementing a lockout, I C S D chose to only communicate information to members of their administration. Employees and parents received nothing instead learning of the threats through word of mouth or the press. At least one of I C S D's schools even had two fire drills that day. The entire staff and student population all grouped together outside the school on a day by all threats were made. Credible or non-credible, I C S D's failure to communicate with its staff and parents is unacceptable. While other districts took swift action, I C S D did not choosing to stay silent until Sunday when they sent an email defending their actions or lack thereof. I'm thirty-three, which means I've grown up alongside some of the worst school shootings in history. A small part of me fears the worst every single time my wife leaves for work in the morning, knowing that if my biggest nightmare comes through, she would do anything in her power to protect her students, which means she might not come home. Once again, the absence of timely communication with the I S, from the I C S D to its educators and parents as this situation unfolds is unacceptable and shows what I feel to be yet another example of a lack of care I C S D administrators have for its staff and its students. As fear, as infuriating as this is, this lack of care is not surprising. As district administrators continue to fail its teachers and students by denying existing issues put forth by the I T A throughout their negotiations. When schools can't retain their staff, students suffer. When schools fail, which students are affected the most? The answer is those from marginalized communities. I C S D's inauthentic culture of love is on full display for the community to see, both through this situation this past Friday and through its refusal to provide teachers with what they fairly deserve. You are no champions of an equitable and inclusive education for all students in this district. You are assisting in propping up the system that you're claiming to fight against. Today, my message is clear. I C S D and Board of Education must prove their commitment to the safety and prosperity of its students and staff by ensuring clear and honest communication in the future and by supporting the I T A's objectives to fix the teacher retention crisis, which will lead to greater student success in all of our schools. Thank you.
The next speaker is Deana Maxwell.
Came here tonight to read part of a board policy, however, not enough people signed up. So with my less than three minutes, I will address the board, district leadership, and the community members about what I think, uh, what transpired last month. We're gonna go back a little bit. I am one of several unhappy members of the community that disagree with your hasty and in my opinion ill-informed vote to extend Dr. Brown's contract. Since he first came to the district, my son was in kindergarten or first grade, five schools are now below average or on warning. Our teachers started this, this school year plus several other years without a contract. Special education is not fully funded and non-special edu- special education teachers and aides are doing the work without equal compensation. We don't have qualified substitutes. We don't have enough bus drivers. We don't have enough janitorial staff. I'm unclear how spending almost three hundred thousand dollars on extending a contract that wasn't even up for renewal when our teachers do not have a contract was the most urgent priority of this board. Maybe twenty-four hours was given, but it was like twenty-three hours and fifty-nine minutes. So many people responded, you don't care about the community and what they have to say, and you voted to extend it. I want to know why, and I also understand I'm not going to get it, and it's really, really frustrating. To his credit, Sean Bradwell, who is not here tonight, offered to meet me after he responded to my email. And I hope that others that I will be contacting will consider that same. So a lot of people have told me I'm lucky not to be in the district anymore. My son has graduated. I think that's really short-sighted and asinine. I have very good friends who are teachers in this district. My neighbors have kids in this district. I know I am a community member in this district. I have people who have specifically left this district because of the overwhelming teacher failure on the part of the district. The district is hemorrhaging teachers, and I just had one of my friends say, tell them that a twenty-one-year teacher like is, is, is like at her wit's end. I thought that board members met with teachers and staff in assigned schools. That's the way it used to work. But clearly, I don't know what the board does. Jacob Schifrin and Emily Workman both admitted that in the earlier session, that you don't know what's going on in the schools. So now I'm going to step back and I'm going to try to not be aggressive and have a open mind. I'd like the board members to consider having open discussion with interested parties outside of this environment with community members to start healing the huge rift that is between the community, the teachers, the students, and the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should we just remind the group that, uh, specific when?
Yes, that's a good point. Normally Sean does that, so, uh, it's hard, hard still, Sean's students. But if he were here, he would, uh, ask to be not named to put individuals in the public conference.
Um, our next speaker tonight is Victor Gayron.
Good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Victor. I'm a community member and the husband of an Ithaca, uh, high school teacher. Um, it's my first time speaking at one of these things. Um, I'm pretty frustrated. I have to come here and speak on one of these things. Usually my Tuesday nights, uh, I'm watching TV while my wife's grading, um, laying in bed scrolling TikTok while she's responding to emails. I'm hanging around while she's working. Um, and tonight I've got to come here and talk to you all about how I'm increasingly frustrated with the degree of loyalty that she has towards this school board. Um, I don't share in that loyalty. I'm pretty utilitarian about my family, our household finances. I know that she loves her job. She loves being a teacher. She's a pretty good teacher, all things considered. Uh, teachers and her students are doing great, and I know that no matter where she goes, she will be a good teacher. She will bond with the students that she meets there. She will form good relationships with her coworkers. She will have tense relationships with administrators, but ultimately respect their decisions. That's the kind of woman that she is. And yet she's loyal to this school district, even though it is not proportionately rewarding of that loyalty. It pays her less than any of the school districts that might border this region. If she was working in Dryden, she'd be making six thousand dollars a year more than she is right now. That's the median salary. This past summer, there was a job application that would pay her seven thousand more than she currently makes. I urged her to take that job, to apply for it. I told her, babe, with seven thousand dollars a year, we're looking at an extra five hundred bucks a month. I could take you on nice dates, or you could take me on nice dates, right? We could visit your parents once a year rather than once every four years. We could afford better health insurance. We might even get access to better health benefits. This district doesn't give its teachers the degree of loyalty that they give it. And that's an unfortunate reality that we're in right now. And that's something spouses of teachers are probably having conversations with their spouses on every day, every summer. We're telling them, take the career advancement elsewhere, and they're telling us, no, I love my students. I love my teach, my coworkers. And it's not fair. It's not fair that they could commute an extra ten minutes and get paid more. It's not fair that they get a better benefits. It's not fair that they get a better salary transparency that this board does not offer them. And so ultimately, I'd ask you to honor the respect and the loyalty that they show you, even when they come here to critique the decisions you make. Because ultimately, they could leave, they could get a better job somewhere else with admin that care about them more, and they choose not to because they love their kids and their jobs and their coworkers and even this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our next speaker is Andrew Like. Andrew. Okay, uh, no, Andrew.
Andrew, no?
Oh. Is that? I just heard the sound that I don't know if that was Andrew. Okay. No. Um, okay, if Andrew comes back, we'll, we'll try them again. Uh, Beverly Tan.
Hi, my name is Beverly Tan. I'm a social studies teacher at Ithaca High School. At the last board meeting, I witnessed an emotionally draining disenfranchisement of our community. Going into I T A contract negotiations, please know this. Teachers from New York City want to move and teach in Ithaca, but the reputation and data from I C S D stop them. When the I T A says teacher working conditions are student learning conditions, it's true. Ithaca High School started the year missing three science teachers. A qualified substitute last year tried to get a job here but was quickly approached by a Truanceburg principal who used to be an admin in this district. L A C S does not offer chemistry or physics at all. A science teacher lives in Ithaca but works in Auburn because I C S D did not post their openings on platforms where most teachers work. The teachers are out there and they're not coming. Teachers know this, principals know this, and students are feeling this. Impact is more important than intent, and I understand you have good intentions, but your impact is the breakdown of trust and morale in this community. It hurts when the board takes no accountability for the issues in the district, yet claims credit for the positives. Board members talk about students at Wegman saying the cell phone pouches are working, but ignore when we say there's strong opposition against your choices and dismiss our data and experiences. Students at I H S are not using their pouches. How are your anecdotes more value, valid than ours? Brian Goodman has the numbers to prove that we have the money for I T A. Why are your numbers more valid than ours? Why invite us to speak at all? Um, when we ask for equitable salaries, family leave that respects recovery and bonding time and inclusive health insurance for domestic partners, we're not doing so out of greediness. We are pleading to feel respected in the only way a capitalistic society acknowledges salary, time, and inclusiveness. We want a contract and a life that tells us we are valued, which all humans deserve. Yet at the last meeting, board members, board members repeatedly referred to teachers as expenses. Expenses. And what everyone needs to know is what student-teacher relationships really sound like in this district. The following is a fraction of your book messages I've perceived over the years. Student number one, your unfailing ability to maintain a cheery disposition at the end of a tiring day in a hot classroom makes global contact that much more interesting. Student number two, your class is the light at the end of my tunnel of my days. Student number three, thank you for making me a better student and a person that can now believe that I can do anything. Board, I implore you to do as good teachers do, which is backwards design. Acknowledge when we have to end up fiscally and then work with teachers and the community to get there instead of starting the conversation with there are no funds. If you use your response time to pick apart our data and stories, you're gravely missing the point. You're in public office to serve a community, and that community is telling you the impact of your choices. You said last meeting that the seventeen people who, uh, who spoke don't represent, represent the whole community. Honestly, that makes me want to cry because who will you listen to if not the people telling you what they need? Your intent does not matter. Your impact does. So please give teachers a respectable contract. This is your legacy. And I will end with student number four. Where do I begin? You're an absolute legend. I don't know where I'd be without you. You stand up for me when others don't. You got me through some tough stuff. In short, you're one of the best teachers I ever had, and frankly, you deserve a huge raise.
Uh, next we have Suzanne Vandeburg.
Well. Um, I'm Suzanne Van Haak, and I'm a special education teacher at Ithaca High School. Um, I'm also a parent of two I C S D graduates. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for all that you all do for our students. As you enter, um, a new season of negotiations, I want to share my perspective as a special education student. This is my tenth year co-teaching economics and my seventh year co-teaching global history. When we, when I started this co-teaching, we had what's called P L C, which is professional learning community time built into our day. And I believe we have Dr. Brown to thank for that because when he came to this district, um, I, I think he, he's the one that initiated that. I wasn't here at the time. But during this time, we were able to, uh, plan together and create accessible materials, um, problem solve so that all learners could, could succeed. Um, unfortunately, the, that time in the day is been switched over to supervision time. So now teachers um, are supervising study halls, monitoring bathrooms, or observe, um, monitoring lunch, lunches. Um, we still have P L C every other Wednesday after school, but those meetings are usually taken up with, uh, department business. But, um, I'm fortunate though because, um, I'm still able to work with my co-teachers. Um, but retention is a concern. Both of my co-teachers are at that fifteen-year mark, and I just, I'm concerned that, um, they would be. And if they leave, all the work that I have put into building our curriculums would lead to. So I'm asking you, and I know you've asked us before, but please make retention a priority. Um, teachers are stretched thin, and it all, it feels like we're just holding things together, kind of like a house of cards. And I don't know who the high school's board member representative is, but I, whoever is the lucky member on this board, I encourage you to come shadow me for a day. I know it's not that exciting. Doesn't seem very exciting. But, um, I invite you to do that just so you can see what it, how we're just trying to hold it together. So you can understand the thought of either one of my co-teachers leaving or one of my special teachers retiring is of, I don't want to think about it because it will just kind of fall apart. I just want to close with this. Before I came tonight, I called my two sons who graduated from this district. Um, and I said, can you just tell me, um, the names of teachers that made an impact on you? And it was a hard question for them because there were many. Can I just finish? So my older son said he majored in music production, production, he said, Miss Sariski, because she, um, she always encouraged my creative side. And my younger son, who's now studying accounting and finance at the University of Alabama, World Tech, said Mr. Carver because of his real-world experience, and he is a realist. These teachers are invaluable. Um, please do everything that you're, you're capable of to retain them. Thank you for this.
Okay, the last, um, speaker tonight is Jordan Clemens.
Hello, my name is Jordan Clemens. I'm the founder of a grassroots revitalization nonprofit called Unbroken Promise Initiative. I'm coming to bring you, uh, you know, I share a lot of the sentiments. Um, I agree with people getting paid. Uh, I do want to just give some context. The last meeting I was here, I gave some historical context. My family's been here since the eighteen twenties, um, escaping a plantation from, um, uh, Baltimore, Maryland area. And so, uh, what I really want to just touch with is, is other worldview. I understand that right now we're not discussing morals, it's about power. Um, I'm a representative of a, of, of population that come from the low-income marginalized disenfranchised community, which is often discussed in this area. Um, but was fortunate out of one of the ones I, in my peer group to overcome a lot of the systemic and oppressive barriers. And so, um, now what I spent my life doing is, is creating a holistic and comprehensive solutions to kind of, you know, uh, overcome the existing barriers that we currently face. And so, you know, when we talk about what times we're in, you know, this is about, you know, democracies and, and free democratic system and, and freedoms are going to be challenged. Um, that's going to lead to, you know, people not feeling like they're a part of the democracy and, you know, people essentially uh, not wanting to work and because they don't feel like they're connected. And so you're seeing that with our teachers and, you know, what is that going to lead to? That's going to lead to decay within. And so we're feeling that more so than ever in our community because prior to COVID, this was already, like I said, like I've said in the last meeting, this was already historically an issue within our community as far as low-income people in this county not getting their needs met. So now when you put in the pandemic, that exacerbated, we were on the front lines to already kind of hold up the deck of cars that had fell during the pandemic when everything was strained. Now you put in the, the shift in the landscape at the federal level, and now financial budgets, everything's constrained. Labor unions, you know, from transportation to education all across all of the, of the points that coincide with, with qualities of life as far as all people. But I'm speaking with low-income people. Now the work in which I've done, the, the issues that we have been facing for generations, but obviously now talking about the present is now exacerbated. And so what I'm looking to do is I'm looking to really discuss with all stakeholders, teachers. Um, I've been an advisor to the mayor, you know, in twenty twenty, so I was really focusing on the city aspect, but now I'm in the education aspect, so looking to connect with, you know, Dr. Brown, the superintendent. Because when you look at the three pillars of the way in which our society is organized around fiscal, you're looking at the city, you're looking at the county, and you're looking at education. And so I wanted to just bring that to your attention, that Unbroken Promise Initiative is really looking to bring a cohesive and holistic and comprehensive approach to being able to mitigate the environment we found ourselves all in so that we could weather this storm that we currently all have to be a part of and be, be together. So thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I don't know if Andrew's back.
Is Andrew Like back?
Hey, we'll see. No one else? I'm going to invite any response to my colleagues. Um, yeah. Appreciate everyone coming and speaking, um, Jordan, always, um, all, all the teachers, the husbands, the partners, whoever, things. Yeah, my, my mom worked Southville for twenty years, you know, and, and she didn't get a lot of money. She was kind of, you know, the only income that we had in our house. So I know, I know it's like growing up with not having a lot of money and, um, you know, so I, I, I don't speak for him on the board, but I think everyone on the board does value and appreciate. And I'm sorry that right now the community's feeling like they're not respected. Um, I don't, I don't think there's another board that, that, that works with teachers that way. So without, without you guys, we don't have a district. So, um, I just want to say thank you. Um, that's all I can say in this moment, but I appreciate you guys coming out. I appreciate you guys letting us know your feelings, giving us perspective. So thank you.
Yeah, uh, I'll just echo that what Todd said. I think we, you know, we are a board that serves value and appreciates teachers. Um, and I think we are a board that wants to try to pay teachers as much as we can. Um, we're kind of looking forward to continue the conversations that should be coming up, I think, in October. Um, also just, um, a response to one person's comment about board reps in, uh, in the schools we have now assigned, uh, board members. So all schools have a board representative. I think, I'm not sure where's that posted. Uh, it's posted, I know it's posted on my, on our, on our website.
On our website.
Yeah, so on our website, um, so everybody can see, and individual board members are probably reaching out to schools and P T As to try to connect with that. So, um, everybody could look up and see who their, uh, respective representative is. Um, and if you're not sure, you could also, you know, email the board. Um, yeah, thank you.
And thank you all. And yes, for those who had the document you were reading from physical or electronic, you could always send it to our board clerk, who can distribute it to all board members since there are, we will not. Uh, also just want to jump in and say thank you to, uh, everyone for coming and for sharing your perspectives. In fact, um, want to reiterate the board needs on role. I think, um, we've given it a lot of thought. We took a pause last year. That's why it feels like folks have not been, um, the board has not been as engaged or present perhaps in schools. Um, I think that we're excited about, uh, kicking it off again this year. And hopefully, as Adam said, you've already turned from some of us in order to do that. Um, uh, and, and we really hope that that becomes, I know that when I have reached out to the principals of the schools that I'm going to be representing, I hope I ask them to please um, forward that on to community members and to P T As and others to really encourage, um, deeper engagement and communication. Um, so it definitely is going to be a, a new opportunity to have that. Uh, Deana, you specifically said something about asking board members to connect more with the community. Uh, I talk about this all the time. I don't know where to be. There you are. Um, about wanting to be able to do that and trying to identify ways. I know that over the years, um, board members have set up, uh, you know, coffee hours. They, you know, often say, when we're here, please reach out to us. Now, of course, we talk about the web talk and things on the website, which I know are less personal. Um, but we really are checking our emails every day and responding to folks who request to engage, and it's hard to know who and if anybody wants to do that. I wish that I would get any way more of those and have the opportunity to do much more of it. So I, I, I hate to put it back on you, and we will continue to think about ways that we can engage better in the community, but I also, we are just a email, phone call away. And I think I can speak for myself in saying that I, I always welcome those opportunities and find that those conversations are much more fruitful than what we're able to do here and responding very greatly. Um, and Suzanne just wanted to mention that the, the, uh, the loss of P L C time is really concerning and disappointing, but also not something that we are unaware of. And we had an opportunity last year, the curriculum committee, to be able to speak to a number of teachers um, about that loss and about the impact of not being able to engage in, um, co-teaching, strategic planning and engagement. Um, and I know that Mary has been working on that a lot, and we continue to have those conversations. So I appreciate you kind of raising it again and making sure that we talk about any kind of strategies and ways that we can increase that time that teachers travel with one another. Um, and Beverly, I want to connect with you about what we're saying about, uh, uh, where we, where the district is posting jobs. Um, I'm chairing the H R committee, and one of the things that we're going to be focusing on this year is, is retention and it's from that. Um, I'm chairing the HR committee and one of the things that we're going to be focusing on this year is is retention and it's from that aspect. And um, I I venture to say that the district thinks that they're posting. So we, I think we would all, and I'm sure the district as well, would love to learn about where we're missing the mark there and how we can be better. And it's just reaching kind of it's uh, so that they know about other things.
And I'd like to add too that all the board liaisons are listed on the line. Also, look at the description of the board liaisons. There are certain things we cannot get to all of them. And we're not there to, um, oversee specific work that people are doing. So to look at, because that that's what we met during the summer to talk about, um, had to be very cautious what our involvement was.
And I'll just to throw out, it is very helpful when when folks come and take some public comment. It's very helpful when we get emails sent to the board and messages. And like Emily said, I also like just love conversations with people. And so regardless of like board liaison or anything, just like just know that it is helpful to hear from people and to talk to them.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on. Let's make two, two comments, one about the board and and one about some of the comments made. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank my colleagues. Uh, it is sometimes difficult to sit here in the public eye and hear deeply held views from the public. Yes, it's appropriate to do so, but it's sometimes difficult to to hear views that differ very much from one's own and just have to agree to respectfully disagree. And I just want to thank my colleagues for their order to in doing that role. Secondly, uh, I do invite folks to, just speaking alone for myself, to uh, go back to the last meeting, um, you know, the folks who came up who were teachers or who were very teachers, I can relate to that. And I laid out in our last meeting, desire. I was only speaking for myself, but I don't think it's a belief that only I hold of this board, at least me, wanting to do the best we can for teachers. That process is continuing. We have laid out a strategy to make the most resources available to teachers possible. That was said in the meetings of last month. You'll hear more about it moving forward. Uh, we care about teachers and the negotiation is ongoing. So please do not prejudge process that has not concluded. Okay. Moving on, we have center agenda. Student reps, I'm sorry. I, yeah, student reps, right.
I'm believing you guys. Um, I'd like to get the first quick update on our boss, uh, boss board teams. Before I start, I want to mention that one more board rep, Jing, coming here because she's at a tennis match right now. And other our other board rep, Lily, coming to be here, people personal matters. This past weekend, both boys and girls cross country team competed at the McQueen Innovation, which hosted a year seven thousand runners. It's one of the largest cross-country meets and one of the, one of the biggest school sponsored meet in the countries. Voice soccer team, voice TV soccer team, they use the on the street of seven oh. And gross varsity soccer team went up, had a big win against Johnson City last night. Varsity pro tennis also have a strong season with the nine one street varsity football, they got their first win. First time game win and also want to keep this streak going on. Finally, finally, varsity volleyball is dominating this year with a seven oh record, including six shout out varsity foot. Yeah, outside of athlete senior have her government check last yesterday and many of our school clubs are under, are now getting underway and our co-rator, Bobby, had her already bought a competition win. Look ahead, we're excited to announce our fall assembly on Friday, October tenth at Morocco Stadium. The assembly begins at nine, three P M. Sorry, um, we'll feature student performance clubs and teams. Overall, it's been exciting seasons and we're proud of our energy and achievement that happening at the high school. Lastly, I just want to mention that future learning and future learning condition, our student working condition. Thank you.
Okay, um, you should all have these papers in front of you. So this is from a survey that our school did on um, self, my cellphone ban. So I just want to go over a few points through this, so the public knows and so you guys are aware um, what the board reps think is most important. Um, so first of all, I just want to say overall was pretty neutral. The survey, students didn't have a lot of strong opinions, but there are some that I mentioned those. Um, but there's a lot of interesting and useful data that I think you guys could um, use to, if you're going to change policy. Useful. So starting off, um, students overall rated their general experience with the phone ban as a three point one four out of five on average. Um, notably only eight point eight percent rated as a five out of five, but only nine point four percent rated as a one out of five. And um, there's charts in the back where you can see um, the score distribution um, in their general experiences. Teachers rated it higher on their surveys with an average rating of four point two six out of five, and zero teachers rated their experience below three out of five stars. So pretty good ratings there. Uh, about fifty-two percent of students rated their stress levels as a three out of five, with twenty-eight percent of students rating it as a four or five out of five. Um, but a super majority of students feel that the stress levels have stayed the same or decreased as a result of the phone ban. And teachers agree with about ninety-three percent of them saying that students seemed um, as or less stressed than they did last year. Uh, about forty-five four percent of students say that the hallway atmosphere feels the same as last year. Um, but thirty-six point four percent rate it as worse or significantly worse than last year. So that might be something to look into. About sixty percent of students reported that they use their phones less or significantly less in school. Um, but overall, the the rest of that, there's not much. Um, there weren't many responses saying they use their phones more in school. So majority of them use their phones less, some of them use their phone the same amount. Uh, seventy-five percent of survey respondents reported that the hardest place to use their phone was at lunch, which is expected. Um, it, we should note though, that since the survey was collected, um, games like Spikeball and Quarter Hall have been invited to lunch and cards provided indoors. So that should be going down. Uh, twelfth graders are twenty-five percent more likely to use their phones at lunch when compared to the average. But I do want to note that's still very low. The average phone usage at lunch is still at about a two point five out of five self-reported. Um, uh, next, a few stats about phone usage across different locations. Um, about eighty-three percent, um, eighty-three point seven percent say they use their phones rarely or never in class now, which I think is a lot more than last year. Um, over the head. Um, so I think of of a very important statistic was that about, um, well, majority of students said they are similarly distracted as compared to last year. So not a huge change in distraction. Um, self-reported students. And as a student, I think I can say pretty surely why. I think that people are off their phones less in class, but students are still talking, um, talking more, which is a good thing in in some circumstances, but not a good thing in others. Uh, so students are still distracted in that manner. Uh, there's a few charts in the back that I think will be useful to you guys. I do want to say that although phone usage has decreased, I don't think that students are using pouches. I don't, honestly, I don't think I know a single person that actually uses those cyber pouches. Um, I know there are people that use them, but I don't think majority of students are actually putting their phones in the pouches. I think they're in their pockets or they're in their bags, still not out in class. Um, lastly, I just, I have to say it again, negotiations were postponed. They were supposed to happen a couple of weeks ago and they didn't happen. Students want the teachers paid. It's it's simple and there there's people in the district that have done the math. It's possible to pay them, it's possible to give them step in lane. My teachers are less motivated to put an extra work in their teaching and rightfully so. I mean, no matter how much you love a job, you're not going to work for no money or little money at least. I also want to say, like Ms. Tan said, both high schools are missing teachers and that's putting extra workload on the teachers. I have a chemistry teacher right now. Our class at the start of the year was over, um, over the maximum. And he had two classes and my my class was still over the maximum. It's a chemistry classroom. That can't happen because what am I going to do at a lab bench when there's ten people crowded around one lab bench? It's harming education to have low teacher retention. And the reason we have low teacher retention is because we're not paying the teachers. Pretty simple.
Okay. Actually, let's start with something a little sillier than what my normal will be brought. But LACS has a really vibrant fundraising culture and we're running one of our largest fundraising events right now, which is yard work. We do pretty much any yard that you want, back to a point out, twelve, twelve to twenty an hour. Uh, we'll continue, that's just an example, one of the those. We're going to keep updating you guys on our major fundraisers again. We have a really longstanding vibrant fundraising culture that we we like, but if yard work sounds appealing, you can reach out to me, I believe.
A little shameless right now.
I mean, well, some of you have hired us in the past. Thank you for that. But just going to want to get that out there. Uh, if that sounds good, reach out to me. I believe Spree School has had my uh, email or JG seventeen, blah, blah, blah. So now for a bit more of the serious stuff. Uh, on on behalf of the board, uh, we also did a little survey. My, it's not written up as well as Judah, shout out, but I I thought it'd be good to bring forward some data on how the phone ban is going. So I interviewed and asked students to honestly give some thoughts on the phone ban and maybe with how it's going. The following responses are all anonymous. They're all given under the condition that they would be anonymous. And so, want to practice that. Uh, we, I'm also going to give some anecdotes at the very end, but the following data, that that was correct. So a slight majority of students, about fifty-three percent, said they do not use their phone. Uh, sorry. Said that they do not use their phone during school hours at all. That's that's defined as more like any more than like looking at the time, like legitimately, even just to go open the calculator, just do not use it. Uh, that's down from about forty, about thirty percent from the, from eighty-four percent of students who said that they did use their phone la, oh, last year. Make of that, uh, a a large majority of students, uh, seventy-eight percent said they do not use their phone pouch at all. Uh, but that is, however, seventy for six, seventy-six percent students, sorry, uh, said they believe that students are using their phones less compared to last year or just not at all. Anecdotally, we have a bit, we've seen a bit of the opposite effect uh, between age ranges at school. We are middle school, high school. So anecdotally, students have said they see middle scores on their phones more than high scores, or that high scores need more disciplines about putting their phone in their bag. Make of that, we've all, would you will, uh, but a real thing is that case don't release the patches, Nick, really at all, a lot, uh, pretty much all students communicated the fact that that kind of a joke, that that that's what some of the students said. But again, again, that is anecdotal. So last meeting, and as you can see, I'm wearing my ITA blue today. I, it's it's a nice shirt, but I'm not just, I'm wearing it for no reason. Uh, we, as a student body, want to reiterate our support for the ITA and their contract negotiations, want to reiterate that, we are like, and yet we support their request for stepping lane. We support requests for pay, for pay family leave and for supplemental medical, Medicare. Like, I spoke to this last week, but I think it's another very important point to make. We we really do love the people that work in our building. I really, really, truly mean that. Like, teachers at LACS go above and beyond every day from making, working in a progress, like they work in a progressive education environment, which can be more demanding, like completing different kinds of classes to having to to just being friends and knowing students on a deeper level with families and projects and committees and something more ways to engage, but get also more work for the same teacher. And I believe Emily, Bo, and I can can all attest to these experiences with teachers who have gone above and beyond. On behalf of the student body, we want to see teachers have a new contract. We want to see teacher to be retained. We want to, we want to have students who enter at LACS in sixth grade have the same teachers all the way until their senior year. I've been lucky enough to have that. And if I'm so grateful, I've had teachers who've known me from the time I was eleven, when I'm eighteen years old. That is really a step. So I look forward to hearing the update, reunion later on, on where the contract negotiations are, negotiations are at. But as a student body, we want to affirm our supports really, really deeply. Okay.
Oh, we're not finished. Sorry.
You're not done yet. There's a follow-up there.
Um, all right. Last, last week, the three of us attended a training at Bosse's talking about the uh, ex-officio student board members' role under the new state law that got passed last year. Um, I don't know if any of you have a chance to like read over that, the wording of that new law, but it does have some changes to what we currently practice. Um, including being like a a more active part of agenda item discussions as well. Um, so we'd love to like work with you on how we can be more sort of uh, have a louder role in this, in this sort of meeting process in accordance with that new law. Um, let's see. Uh, again, like reiterating what other other folks were saying, like all of my teachers go above and beyond, every single one of them. Um, you know, emotionally and um, academically and financially, uh, you know, like providing snacks, sometimes paying out of pocket for field trips, relying on grant money from other places rather than the district to reimburse them for certain things. Like, this is the the relationships that our teachers build with the students over time, as Julian was saying, um, is is so important and is so much work. Uh, and it means, it 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 is, it is sad to see my teachers struggling in all of these steps of the process. Um, uh, sad for me as 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 someone who really, really cares about my teachers. Um, and yeah, I I moving on to the next piece, um, today was Orange Shirt Day. It was way too hot for me to keep this up all day. But, um, for those who don't know, Orange Shirt Day is practiced across the continent in recognition of the victims and survivors of US and Canadian governments' school Native American boarding school policies of forced assimilation. The last boarding school closed in, I think it was nineteen seventy-three. Um, so you know, this was a fairly recent and horrific thing that has led to generational problem. Um, and this, the the LACS effort of of education in that regard was headed up by one of our fantastic teachers, John Raymond. Um, and his, this year's cohort of the community service class. Uh, so they were handing out pins and orange things and little uh, uh, educational zines and all of that today. So that was really cool to see. Um, projects, projects are a really cool thing that LACS does. We have gotten them up and running. Uh, we do all sorts of things. All three of us actually signed up and got into this awesome project headed up by a new math teacher, swing dancing. Um, so we were doing that today and it was so much fun. Um, yeah, yeah, lots of, lots of really cool stuff being offered this year. So, yeah, looking forward to updating you guys on that. Um, yeah, and 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 lastly, I had a little piece, like, I was just realizing, sort of looking at the agenda of this meeting, uh, and figuring it all out. It would be so much hard, so, so, sorry. It'd be so difficult to figure out how to come and speak and be a part of this meeting if I did not have people like who knew better than me sort of teaching me at that, at that initial stage. Um, it feels like, like with the, with the current sort of transparency and communication um, and accessibility of the website, it is really difficult to figure out what is going on at these meetings. Like, the the agenda is published literally like the day before the meeting happens. Um, so it's hard to sort of garner up any kind of like sort of reaction to that. Um, the it is never entirely clear. Like, I think the language with this one was executive session usually happens at six from from six to seven and the public meeting starts at seven. And that's really sort of an asterisk below everything else. Um, so that's confusing for some folks. And then also with the location change. All I'm saying is it could be All I'm saying is it could be easier and it could be more sort of. Welcoming of people coming to share their voices and to just listen in and be a part of this really important space. Yeah, sorry.
So, all right, last one, promise. Um. At at least for us. Um, so firstly, I wanna talk about the LACS Advisory Council. So the Advisory Council is one of our decision-making bodies at LACS composed of students, staff, alumni, caregivers, other community members, pretty much everybody. Advisory Council serves to provide advice, insight, and community perspective on all of our schools' happenings, as one would say. It makes and it's important to note it makes decisions by consensus and not majority. That's kind of a big deal. Um. In fact, all three of us just came from the Advisory Council's first meeting of the year. Like, we pretty much were there an hour hang here. So, uh, and we just really wanna say that we would actually like if one or more of the board members could be could attend uh. Next month's meeting, and that's October twenty eighth at LACS uh in the LACS library from four o'clock to five thirty. Uh, we'll probably contact contact you guys through email, just just as like a. We we might, yeah. Uh, so next on my list here, I wanna shout out the LACS Spanish trip. Uh, and the board will see him later in the year just for approval at the for the location for kicking off our first school dance of the year. It truly was like a sma- a smashing success when so many students being present and they all really had an incredible time. It's just like a good way to kick off our spirit for the year. All right, but all right, for the final part, I wanna practice the next statement with recognition that deciding and publishing an agenda is difficult, time-consuming work. With that being said, I would like the board to consider publishing the agenda at an earlier date. As an ex as ex officio student board members, it is our responsibility to represent the school's student body in board matters, including agenda items. It is hard for us to do so when we lack the time to seek out student opinions.
And then one more thing, um, back to the cell phone. Hey, I realized I forgot to mention possibly the most important part. Um, there were a few struggles that came up, um. Like a lot on the survey. There was an open response, um, question where students could list their greatest struggles. So a few really important ones that I think um could have easy solutions. A lot of students reported struggles with contacting parents. So I know me personally, I have a very busy schedule and that busy schedule changes a lot. And there are times where at the school day where it might be. Uh, nice, and I know I did this last year to be able to contact my parents and last year would have been me sending a quick text. This year I can't do that. And so it's hard for me to communicate with my parents and I know it's the same way for a lot of students. Uh, students also reported that they had trouble finding and meeting up with friends during lunch or after school. Again, this is something that I've had trouble with. IHS is. Weird at lunch because we have a universal lunch where students can go anywhere on campus, not anywhere, but a lot of places on campus. And so sometimes my friends will be eating in the quad and sometimes they'll be eating in a random room in K building. And so it's hard to find them during lunch and it's hard to have that connection with them. Uh, and then if I wanna go somewhere after school with them, I find them after school and that's a little thing. Um. Uh, students also complained that they miss having access to music uh during independent work and study halls. Last year, I put my headphones in, I would listen to my music while I was doing my work. This year, I have no way to do that. Headphones are generally not allowed, um, especially not if they're connected to. Phones and there's no way to listen to music on computers because uh music streaming platforms are blocked. Um. Both two students and teachers complained that the cell phone ban had hindered students' learning in some way. So a few specifics were uploading lab reports. I know for me and a lot of my science classes. What I would do when I was uploading a lab report, I would take a picture of my phone and I would send it to my teacher. Or I would be taking a picture of the actual lab setup and I would send that to my picture or send that to my teacher. Um, another thing was tuners in band and orchestra class. A lot of students would use their phones for that and now they haven't used analog tuners. And those cost money and we don't have that much money. And so we don't have that many tuners. Um, and so students are not able to use their phones for that anymore and that's causing problems too, but those are the struggles that we found. And that's all.
More thing. And and I I promise, sure. And it go to these well, students at LACS lunch is the worst time for phones. We also have universal lunch play against each other's finance, which the building is simply smaller and people have more dedicated lunch spots. As well, so just kind of wondering why we're in this room for that. I mean. It's like a like.
It's cozy.
It's cozy.
It's cozy.
I mean, it's like just.
Yeah.
But.
Wow, extra one pause.
All right, I'm gonna jump in.
All right, cool.
Okay, thank you guys all for sharing so much. We have a very lively and um engaged group of. Uh, board members, so I appreciate you all. Um, and with that, uh, Emily, the ex officio student board member policy is something that we have drafted a. Made a first draft of and the policy committee. Is is working on on uh working through together so that we can uh have a policy put together that we can bring to the rest of the board. Um, so that is a priority. Um, I will say that you are right. It is uh the the new policy guidelines give an opportunity for. Um, students to engage much more in conversations throughout the board. Um, meeting, which we are really, really excited about and certainly value um all of the contributions that you all bring. Um, I will also say, though, that this um this policy was developed. Thinking about the vast majority of school districts that have and have never had a student board rep. Um, we have been lucky enough to have them for quite a long time and to have many of you, which we are really grateful for. Um, but I think that when it was drafted, it was definitely in mind of. Yours, since there would be so much more opportunity to engage throughout. Um. We have not come to any decisions, but I do think that I I I am grateful that you are willing to. Um, engage with us about how the policy might look because we need to be able to balance. Adding, you know, I think it would be seven, you know, new board members that would be engaging in all of the conversations or. If there might be an opportunity for us to think about like. One or two board members a year who have like the formal ex officio role. And then we have our board reps kind of playing a role that you all have been praying so far. So I think there's opportunities to try to figure that out. Um, together and explore the best way, most inclusive way to do that. Um, so I'm really glad to give you that one for tiny. Was it at all helpful?
Yeah. Yeah, we met all of uh the surrounding district board reps as well, which is really informative to hear about how other districts are doing as well.
Very, very cool.
I figured possibly we would love to like discuss and privately about how we like how the policy can look.
Absolutely. Yeah, we we certainly welcome that and Niall and myself and Sean are. Um, on the policy committee, so we're gonna be taking the first. So, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I did not know uh candidly about the orange sweater, orange color thing, so thank you for educating me on that. I'm assuming that's what your software going for.
Yes, it is my software, of course.
Yeah, well, thank you for sharing. Um, in terms of the board meetings, I think that the the feedback about the. Agenda and when it's shared, I would say that even some of us board members would love to be able to see those agendas earlier as well. Um, and so that's certainly a topic of conversation that we can have internally at the board. Um, and uh and certainly would love to include all of you in that as well to make sure that everyone is more informed and prepared as. As early on as they can be. Um. Uh, I will though put my like Sean hat on since he's not here though to just say that we there is a like. Board meetings are also like not set up for. Two-way engagement. It's unfortunate and I think that that's why we are constantly looking for more ways to be able to engage with the community. So it's not to say that we can't make any changes and I hope that we will, but I also. Welcome feedback from folks on like other ways that we can do it, like in the past boards have like you've had meetings in other places and visited in other schools and. Gone out to Brookendale and other places to try to get closer to different communities. We tried to have like listening sessions, so. Just welcome out the box thinking that we could do to engage outside of this meeting specifically as well. Um. I'm speaking very much as one board member right here. I hope that I don't. Say anything that I shouldn't, but I just wanna be clear that like I do not care about the pouches at all. I do not care if anybody is using the pouch. It doesn't surprise me that nobody is using the patches. My son is finally in middle school and he's, you know, at least has his little watch and he certainly. Never uses the patch as well, but he always keeps it away and nobody sees it and. I can only speak for myself in saying that like that's all I care about, like hearing all of this data. I think that there. Is room for growth and opportunity to do things differently and to make sure, you know, that we're thinking about the negative impacts. Um, uh, to students and and to the school community in general. Um. But if kids are keeping them out of the way, I would assume that then, you know, school leaders, even if they may not say so, like that's the goal. And it the pouch is supposed to help students do that. And if it's not helping and they're doing it some other way, then great. Um. I I'm I'm a little like. When I hear you, Judah, say like, uh. You know, now we're not able to like upload that, like it's it's hindering like student learning and progression in some ways. I want to like stay. In the know about that and hope that you can like continue to share with us. I also will just say that like. There's gonna be some adjustments. I would like to think that like, of course, we're all like have been using our phones to do those things quickly. Maybe a year from now. There will be other ways that we will be able to do those things. I'm still hopeful that the benefits will outweigh the costs of. Of of students not having phones. Um, and I also will celebrate like the students are talking more in class, even though perhaps some of the teachers in the room might find that very annoying. I think that's. Really, really exciting and part of the reason that I was hopeful about getting rid of phones in the first place. Was so that students were learning and connecting with one another even informally. Um, so thank you. Thank you all for all the research that we did. Um, we love data and I'm so excited about seeing all of these little charts. Very, very fun. Um, you're obviously gonna be fully employed in so many places already, just by other use goals. Um, so thank you for all that you shared and for continuing to engage.
Yeah, my couch has been a lovely expensive new pencil case.
If I have effective policy implementation, it's all about understanding the goal and connecting data towards that. Then make the decisions. So just due to Julian, Lord, thank you so much for sharing that information. Really, really helpful. And just for my own clarity, when you say the hardest place to use their phone is lunch. What's that?
Like, uh, it's hardest to resist a temptation.
Thank you for clarifying.
Um, I I just wanna say I. I wanna pat myself on the back. I mean, if you talk to any of my exes, they'll always say that I'm always wrong. So every now and again, I write about something. And I was right about this pouch, so I just wanna bring a little levity to the room and it make it make you feel good to hear that. So. Um, no, but in all seriousness, I I I wanna thank you guys for um advocating for the teachers and, you know, advocating for change. Um, cuz it's not easy to do. It's not easy to do to come into a room of, you know, full adults and to do that. And I just I respect it and it takes courage and I try to raise my voice to always speak your truth and stand up for what they believe. Even if it's simple, most especially in this little. So I just wanted to like acknowledge the courage it takes for you guys coming here and advocating for the teachers. So, um. Yeah, and I I wanna, um, I I I come from a different world. I come from a wider world and I'm not used to bureaucracy and it's like. Negotiations do drag on and you know, and I think for everyone's sake, I mean, I'm not I'm not playing, I'm like, I I'm responsible for it. I'm on the board. Um, I wish I could just sit in a room and have like open dialogue and. There's like laws and there's rules in place that as a board member, if there's union negotiations that like. Can't have certain conversations. And to me, that's frustrating. It's like there's there's things that I there's respects that I wanna share. There's things I wanna hear and. We're not able to do that because of laws that are imposed. I'm not used to that. It doesn't feel that it's frustrating. Um, to me, the process is dehumanizing. Uh, because you can't speak to each other, right? It's like, well, we have to follow this protocol. We have to like take these bridges and we can't actually. Cross the bridge onto each other's island and understand like what we need and how we can, you know, come together. So it the process is hard. Um. And, you know, it's difficult because there's always so much money and, you know, we. The money comes from a vote, you know, and it comes from people paying higher taxes. So like there's there's so many challenges. There's so many nuances to it. And we're starting with federal funding, you know, so it's like. We are looking to how do we make this, how can we pay teachers more and how can we be viable? You know, not just for the next two years, but like into the future. And we're trying to have like long-term solutions. Like I don't say poorly, we've picked the low-hanging fruit. Um, and at this point, like we need to be able to figure out a way to to balance the budget and have more money and that's, you know. Actually selling, um, you know. Uh, district property and, you know, bringing that stuff under the tax bill so that we have more revenue and eventually. A but for me, consolidating schools, but finding solutions. Um, so that way, you know, this this could be something that doesn't. Maybe we can pay people more for two years, but then we have financial cliff. So like how we make sure that this is sustainable, how to pay people more for decades. And we are trying to do that. Stuff that hasn't been done on this board, I mean, we've owned Danby Elementary School for forty years and it's been vacant. Right, like, so thi- thi- these are things that we're looking at as a board that no one's ever wanted to touch or even thought about looking at. Um, so we are trying to get creative and sometimes you guys aren't always seeing that. Um, and again, there's a process that we have to go through. Like, we have to go through an RFP and do all this other stuff. And to me, I'm like, let's just sell it. Like, we can't, like, we have we have to follow certain procedures, which is really frustrating as a board member. Um, it makes us look bad. It makes us look like we're not listening. And we are listening and it's important that and I encourage everyone to keep coming, keep speaking, because every time. You know, one of these meetings happens, like sometimes I just I might hear something I didn't know before and I might care about perspective that I didn't have before. Um, so it's it's eye-opening for all of us. Um, I'm grateful for all the presence. So, yeah, thank you everyone.
I'm gonna say one thing this part. We're completely open. Like, if you ever need like a student input, like, or like, we'd love to help out, like, from the student track. Like, we we're always here. We love to talk, as you know, so we're completely like, we're completely available. Uh, that's like I speak for for always, I'll bond with us with that, so. Yes.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you we attended. This is the Saturday. Training that you.
Wednesday.
Glad to hear you. And I'll do the varsity for. Um, vars varsity volleyball for Dominica. And for copies of the cell phone data and if you have a copy just for the tourists, we're gonna go into more conversation during the. During this meeting where we have had a ministry to talk more about it too. And it would be good to get information on um total number of users with a pouch. How many are interested, quite a few or not.
Any other comments? Okay, that concludes section four of our agenda. We move on to section five, the consent agenda. We. I believe have a motion to prove at the same time the consideration of house personnel report. Student report. That include the minutes, I don't think so. Yes, in minutes. Yes, it is in there as well. So the motion, uh, the language there includes the minutes as well. They would like to.
Move that, I'll move it. Uh, move to approve all consent agenda items listed in the consent agenda, consideration of the council personnel report, students. And it's a previous meeting as presented.
Discussion.
I was not discussion, just acknowledgement to IPI, Public Education Initiative for. Um, grant distribution that had given to the school district over the years and to the.
Thank you. Always.
Gracious, thank you.
Any other? Okay, I will call the question on the consent agenda. Oh, yes. So it's. Okay, six, yes, and he knows. The extensions. Okay, I carries. We now move on to section.
Okay, I carries. We now move on to section. Assault, uh, that was just all the way to, uh, superintendent report.
Yeah.
Dr. Brown, please.
Thanks for the opportunity. That's great. I'll be brief because we have a lot to give to you. But I just wanna begin by acknowledging and recognizing the space we're in. Uh, this is called the Board of Education Conference Room and it's gotten and earned that name because we've had. Decades of board education meetings in this space. I, I'm thinking of you, look at the long history of Board of Education meetings. On my time in York was a bit of a timeout. Because this has been the place we've had it. And for folks, I, I just wanna share that a lot goes into public meetings and how you conduct a public meeting, how you. Got access to a public meeting and we've gotten feedback over my fifteen years. We've got a lot of feedback on access. Um, accessibility, whether or not you're gonna be going up or downstairs. Um, is there a sign-in seizure or not? Some folks have asked for a sign-in procedure from the community. Um, this was a topic on the agenda for our regional superintendent's meeting most recently, where we heard about the best practices when it comes to. Public meeting, particularly public meetings at this time, as much as shifted over the decades. I was here when we were, all of our school buildings had open access. No front doors are locked and we had no one at those doors. And we had parents and families, including myself, who would just walk through buildings throughout the day. Um, things have shifted and changed. Um, and I've been here, people were really upset when we had doors locked. Before coming into building, then we made some adjustments. So the same is true for public meetings and I learned, uh, the Ithaca City School District was. The last school district I was able to find that had open access. To this Board of Education meeting without anyone signing in, out being buzzed in whatsoever. Um, so what you're seeing now is us, um, making some attempts to respond to best practices. Uh, and frankly, to respond to some of the requests we've had around accessibility and access to our meetings on so many things you've seen in most recent years. Um, live streaming, uh, YouTube meeting. Well, the technology is another aspect that goes along with these things and having the right access in any room. So I just wanna say to folks, there's a lot that goes into this and I wanna commend the board for being open. To the evolution of the best practices and the recommendations from folks who advise us on where to host meetings, but you could not be open to that. But thank you for your inclusiveness. Thank you for your responsiveness. Thank you for your thoughtfulness when it comes to how to conduct this public meeting and the way that's an engaged meeting in the best way. I, I have a lot of other words I would use to describe you, and I'm a lot of cowardice. They're all very positive and thank you. Um, and again, thank you for being back in the Board of Education boardroom meeting space. And I know that this may be temporary, we may look at other spaces. There are other spaces we're looking at right now. In our school district and outside of our school district that we may have meetings, um, to address those same things that I mentioned before. The other item I just wanted to mention briefly, I, I hope folks can tune into the curriculum committee. Meeting that happened before this meeting, where with a great learning conversation from my perspective, thank you for your leadership of that dialogue. Uh, one of the topics we talked about was student achievement. Uh, and student achievement, particularly when, uh, uh, related to our. Grades three through eight, most recent test scores, which are now becoming public, um, and we're able to talk about those things. So again, I could take a lot of time here, but I just wanna make sure folks know. That we're gonna be talking more and we've talked about it at the curriculum committee meeting. And if I could, you know, uh, cause I hope to use my time for the next couple of months to. Talk about school data and achievement result. And tonight I would, you know, I would share, yeah, LA data that was shared at the previous meeting. An eight percent increase in overall three, eight ELA proficiency rates, outperforming the state in all grades. Um, double-digit increases at five of our eight elementary schools, increases at all of our elementary schools. The highest proficiency rates in ten years. There's been a lot said tonight about, I love the teachers and as a teacher and I was coming from a family of teachers, I love educators and teachers too. And I love the young people I serve. And when I describe them, I, I describe them in ways, uh, where they're. I described their joys and their genius and their brilliance and at times their performance, knowing that we can always be better. But I've never used words like failure or needs improvement. And neither has our state. But I just wanna remind folks, um, I have a data portfolio that speaks to how young people and educators are performing in a way that's learning and respectful. Because you work hard and you learn these numbers. And when folk bring their data to me, what their judgment statements, I am going to interrupt it with data. That speaks to what our young people and educators are doing. And I have my data portfolio and I hope folks can bring theirs too. Thanks for the opportunity to share that way, that.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we now move to section.
Can I, sorry, for just one second, sorry. I just. I really just wanna reiterate what Dr. Brown just said. We, those of us that were in the, the curriculum meeting. Um, we have seen really significant, very exciting improvements in the test scores that were shared with us. Um, from the executive team, um, really exciting. When we, we have been talking for. Years, several years now about the, the drops in test scores and about how concerned we are about how. Students are performing in this district and, uh, looking at the data that we were, that is readily available to everybody now and seeing the incredible improvements. Um, not just across students in general, but in some subgroups as well, um, and some of them like pretty dramatic. And so to also just. We, we need, we need help in the way we, as I say, sometimes like we get so much, we, there is so much we can talk about that we want to improve upon. Or that we wanna see changed in this district. But that also means that when we see things that are really positive, like I hope that we can also re-elevate and, and talk about that. Um, and so I, you know, we talked about using the, uh, the PTA council or other PTAs or our roles. As school liaisons to be able to share some of this information. It's really exciting. And when we hear people here talking about how great teachers are. This, this is a great example of what happens when we have incredible students in our schools and incredible tutors who are, are helping them grow, um. And so just want to shout that out and make sure that, that folks are also recognizing the, the really positive things that are coming out. We will be more than happy to. Help you, she thinks. I, I, I would be more than happy to help you find ways to be able to share that data more. So. I'm sure that the communications team in the district, if there were ideas, I'm always trying to think of like. How can we make this prettier and bigger and better so that people can actually see all that's happening? So. Um, encourage you all to take a look and, and we'll encourage the district also to. Continue to think about creative ways to elevate, um, elevate that information and the wins that we're seeing as well. So. Thank you. Thank you for the teacher and for the students as well.
Uh, we move on to section eleven, school district business. First up is an update on the cell phone policy. I have a single slide, but I, I, I don't know who's.
We're gonna invite that, right? It's Donald. Probably gonna come up, okay, well.
Good evening, everyone.
We have another chair. So thank you for coming with distinctly awaited information. I just ask you to introduce yourself for the record and.
Yeah, it's Mary Grover, Assistant Superintendent of Teacher Learning.
I'm Patrick Covey, I'm one of the associate principals in the high school.
And Arnold's principal of the high school. All right. So I hope tonight we had talked about providing a brief. Update after one month of implementation, knowing that there are going to be lots of things that we can. Do better and acknowledge that worked or and the unintended. Unintended needs that surfaced. Like I took a note about tuners and talking with the finance. Finance department about what's needed around tuners and the first week, what, what we've been doing and, um. Emily was able to join us for some walkthroughs just across schools every Tuesday and Thursday. The first couple of weeks, just to gather some internal street data and hear things like, wow, we need more chargers because the Chromebooks are dying. So. Need to order more chargers for the classroom because while students. Charge their Chromebooks in the evenings, sometimes. It doesn't retain it right. Um, another, another piece was, um, more library books. The libraries do use more. So a couple of, I'll, I'm gonna turn it over to. If the high school leadership and introduce ourselves and talk more specifically about if the high school.
Yeah, um, Mr. Hovey was really the catalyst behind, um, all the cell phone work in the high school and rolling that out. So I will let him start and. Um, definitely talk about some of the reasons, like even thinking about like why the pouches and looking at that and then looking at the policy. And explaining to students, when we look at the policy, the policy clearly said that we needed to have a securing place for those pouches. So that is the why, is because we had to look at the policy, what, what did the policy, what was asking us to do? Um, along with, we didn't have enough lockers at the high school for everybody to secure their phones in. So. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we covered that part of the why the pouch.
And I'd like to kinda go on. We, we looked at a number of different pouch systems when we looked at it. And I think the pouch that we landed on matched with our philosophy that we wanted the. If students were using the pouches, we wanted them to make sure they were accessible to students in case of an emergency. Uh, we didn't wanna run into situations if a student left with a locked pouch, they were home and didn't have a way to unlock it. We also found the, the locking pouches were easily defeated with six dollar magnets. So while they carried a larger cost, they were more easily defeated, kind of spoke against the reason why the whole, like the whole sales pitch of why having a locked pouch.
Um. And just to piggyback on that, we also talked about, and we heard from students and went out, went out into the community. About, um, I will call it anxiety about locking up their phones in a pouch. And this pouch, our, our why is not to increase anxiety, but to increase engagement. Um, and so this pouch, we felt like was not, was gonna be the least anxiety-causing pouch. They still were in control. They are young adults that are responsible. And as they said, their phones are away. We don't, you know, I think it was Utah or, um, no. Emily, like, Brett, who, sorry, like, your phone is away. That's our why. We want you engaged. We're not looking to see if it was in touch. And. There was a friend who I got her stuff for the nurse and I went, wow, your phone's in the pouch. So there definitely is at least one student.
So I also wanna take this opportunity to thank you for tuning in, putting together the survey, putting that out. Um, in addition to that, our, all of our associate principals, the four of us, uh, which is student co-owners, is the bad four. Went to every single PE class for two days to provide an opportunity for students to provide us feedback. Um, you know, we built it as an opportunity to, you know, clarify expectations, talk about some different structures in the building, but also listen to the kids. And it was overwhelmingly positive. And it was, it was incredible. And I'll, I'll tell you that it was maybe the first time in my eleven years of being with the district that. We were in a, in a presentation style and I had between forty in some sections and upwards of over a hundred students. With almost a hundred percent attention. And as the kids say, locked in. And it was incredible, uh, to be able to look up into the stands. And see a hundred students making eye contact. It was really incredible. And one of the first times I ever had that experience. You go through our, our lunch spaces and what do you see? You see kids playing, talking to each other. Uh, doing all the things that we wanna see in school and you don't see folks. Is it perfect? No, are we seeing the things that we wanna see? You go into our classroom spaces. And I, I, I'm in classroom spaces every single day. It's one of my favorite parts of the day. And you see students engaging. Students are telling us that their assignments are easier. They're making more friends. They're talking more in class. I'll, I'll take that. And these are, this is huge for us. Um, I also wanna identify and thank our IT department, who is working very diligently and solving some of the issues that were. We're, we're commonly use cell phones to solve. Uh, we've been able to distribute 4K document cameras to almost every single science classroom. And when we got there, we thought we had the problem solved. And now we're realizing we have to find additional software to help create the PDF required. For the lab documentation process. Um, we're currently rolling out additional chargers. In common spaces. Uh, IT's done a lot of problem solving with us, where they've actually had like a five. Access charging system, kind of out of my wheelhouse, but again, responding to the things that are coming up. And that was also kind of the things that we were identifying in our PE presentations, to think about. All of the things we didn't think about. You know, we were able to access fourteen hundred fifty thinkers. And identify areas that we didn't identify. And we're actively searching for solutions for all of them. Uh, I also, we haven't touched on it, but we're really looking at collecting data in three different ways. And we see up here. Street data, which is just anecdotes and observations. We're using referrals for when we do need to, um. You know, work with a student if they are violating the electronics ban. Um, and then comparison data, which I think really speaks for itself. Uh, I know our library staff is very excited, but to see a twenty-eight percent increase in checked out books is incredible. Um, see a thirty-five percent decrease in all disciplinary referrals. Um. It, it speaks to what, what I feel is one of the, the most significant cultural shifts we've made in the building since we've shifted to universal lunch. Um, and then I think one of the most important things we're seeing is, uh, the single-digit suspensions. As compared to last year, which was much larger number, but we can't put that data into the slides, so.
Yeah, I will say on the library book checkout, um, we were reading articles about other school districts that are further along in their implementation. And that's one thing that we saw across the board. So we automatically went to Mr. Carrigan and said, hey, we need that data. Are we seeing that at the, at the high school? So we were pretty excited about that. So, um. Patrick's pretty good about following a lot of different schools, thinking about where are the problems? How can we help solve them? Working with the student reps and looking at the survey and what are we missing and what do we need and where are the challenges? Um, as we talked about, um, in our group there, we want to know from teachers and students so that we can address them moving forward. So that's important data.
And, and we plan to continue to survey our students and our staff as we move through the year to see exactly how this is progressing and. Identify other challenges that we need to solution seek around.
I have a question. There was a student who mentioned, I can't recall which one, to mention about, um. Needing to contact their caregiver during the day, to schedule change or something like that. So how does that feel?
Yeah, we told all the students that of course they're gonna need to use their phone. Um, I can think of a particular case. I, I was out at universal lunch and there was a student on their phone. And I actually think it was just habitual. They just pulled it out. I mean, they were like, oh, wait, what? And I said, oh, no, you need, you need to use your phone. That's okay. You're gonna need to. You have the, um, student services, the nurse, you have my office, all the AP offices. Please, would you like, oh, no, I just, and I said, please, we know you're gonna need to use your phone. Um, with that. And then we're working around one, um, challenge is when clubs are canceled. We're finding that, um. So a couple of students said, I wanna tell my parents to either pick me up earlier or later. So one thing with, um, the director of student activities, John Dammier, we're talking about. A club needs to maybe start canceling. They can't cancel with like after twenty-four hours, that kind of thing. So we have prior notice and putting out. Note to parents. But we also talked about, maybe we. Haven't, we, when we, this summer, we went out in the community, talked to the community, talked to the families. So as we were talking as an admin team is, oh, wow, we, we've surveyed staff. We've surveyed, for, um, students, we haven't yet surveyed families. Like what is the impact there? So that is something that we're looking towards, um. Developing a survey and getting family feedback on that. And we, we didn't think of that until we were looking at the student and, um, staff survey. And that's an important part.
I guess, um, we're enjoying this comfortable weather now, but when we enter into the colder climate. And if, whether, whether issues with cancellation and all, and we always put information on our website as well as to what's different, what serves. It's gonna be the challenge of how students are going to, um, connect with their fans at that time too. Or it may not be a challenge, right?
I'm so glad that things are going well. I love cell phone ban. It's great. Um, I also think my general belief is that all systems and policies like move towards dysfunction. Like just naturally evolve that way. It's like, I guess I'm curious about. So I think you mentioned, is there a staff? Like there was a staff survey? And like, like what do we, do we know like what percent of people filled it out? Like what, like what were the biggest concerns?
It's like sixty people. It is not a very large change in the size.
I guess for me, I'm curious, like, I see the street data, which I'm guessing we sort of mean like qualitative data, but like. Like what, like. Wonderings I have are about. Is a policy being consistently enforced? Like what's happening with? Like I've heard things about like high, high traffic times, like like lunch where maybe it's harder and what being. Done about that? Are there discrepancies by, like, subgroups, um? But and, so I guess I have lots of questions about it, but what is the recurring data that's being tracked and how are we making sure that that data is? I guess like valid and telling us what we want to know. And also you, I think you said we couldn't share last year's suspension numbers, why, why?
Oh, but that, the reason it's not comparison that compared in that is in general, it's our practice. When the data set gets so low, five or less, ten or less, you don't, you don't share it, but. Because it becomes identified, you're like, oh, I, the one kid. For example, was.
So we have a single digit.
Last year there were so few.
Last year and this year, yes, yeah.
There, there was a thirty five percent decrease in suspension, so that, that, that's substantial. I'm sorry, uh, oh, oh, no, in referrals, I'm sorry, I don't, we, we don't have the comparison data in there. They picked that up, so.
So small.
It was.
Small sample size.
And so, yeah, and so then, so I'm also to understand then that disciplinary referrals. There were twenty total disciplinary referrals at the high school last year and there have been thirteen this, that and.
Yeah, in September.
And, and September.
Um, we did, um, and the board of reps might be able to help me, but one of the things, one of the questions to staff was. How comfortable are you in enforcing the cell phone policy? Because we know it's, it's a collective effort. And, um, another one of the question was about support from admin around enforcing the cell phone, um, band. And I know Judah's going to share with me the results of the survey, so I can pass those along.
I can show that now if you can. Um, so regarding the. Teachers being comfortable addressing student cell phone use. Uh, forty three percent of students, and just so you know, the scale is, um, one being strongly disagree, I don't feel comfortable. And five being strongly agree, I feel totally comfortable. Uh, twenty nine percent of teachers said they feel totally comfortable. Um, forty three percent of teachers said they feel mostly comfortable. Um, sixteen point four percent of teachers said they feel neutral. Nine point one percent of teachers said they feel uncomfortable addressing it and one point nine percent, one point eight percent of teachers. Said they feel very uncomfortable, um, enforcing it. And then. Support from this administration, three point six percent of. Uh, teachers said they felt unsupported, very unsupported. Um, zero percent of teachers said they felt somewhat unsupported, sixteen point four percent of teachers said they felt neutral. Forty percent of teachers said they felt supported and forty percent of teachers said they felt very supported. So overall, pretty good data on that.
And I'm not connected to the high school, but what's, what is, what is the data for the whip pointing in L I C S?
Great, so we're getting L I C S data, I do not have it this time, but there are similar turns at both point we do it. Single digit referrals. For this year in regards to cell phones. Uh, very few, um, school A. Two, two times had to take a cell phone to call a parent. To come in and have a conversation, I'm just looking about what in, in our chart of progressive steps of support. Um, school B, one time, school C, zero times. School D, yet to be shared. So we have at the high school here today, given the largest number of students, but there isn't. Outlet, uh, the data component to it and similar. As far as, uh, decreasing suspension, increasing like usage of the library.
And it's important to know in the student, um, survey to ninth graders, incoming ninth graders. Have the least amount of, I would say, challenge with a cell phone and I would say. Um, from their middle school experience, their cell phones fall away.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. Okay, on to item eleven point two. Nation and advisory council on climate action plan, uh, I believe there is. A motion and agenda that anyone would choose to, so move.
I move to approve the creation of the advisory council on a climate action.
That's seconded by, the move by Adam, seconded by Faithful. We now have discussion.
I'd just like to check again, if you could just give an overview of how we came about to service this.
Alright, we're pushing on the spot now.
That's okay, yeah, thank you. It's alright, yeah, yeah.
And, oh, just for the record, to introduce yourself for the.
Yeah, uh, my name is Dan Bryman, I'm the assistant superintendent of operations. I've invited two people from the sustainable advocates to quickly join me.
Will also introduce themselves for the record.
Hi, everybody, I'm Cindy Kramer and I'm a sustainability advocate at Boynton. Uh, where I happily teach social studies and been working as a committee, brought forth the. Uh, the climate action plan proposal to the board in the spring, glad to be back.
Hi, I'm Sarah Brumberg, I'm a science teacher at L I C S also. A sustainability advocate, um, at L I C S. Um, and works on bringing the climate action plan proposal. Last year with my colleagues.
So this, uh, ad hoc committee will be working on the climate action, uh, committee. Or action plan rather, excuse me, and we'll be looking at goals. Uh, and action plans moving forward for the following year. We'll be looking at short term and long term goals. Based all around the climate action plan, but, um, if you two want to speak a little bit more about it, that'd be great.
Um, what we heard when we presented the spring, um, was an interest, uh, certainly a lot of positives, but, uh. Holding on approval up or down and wanting to have. A few meetings where the board, some board members, if the advocates, students, anyone involved. Um, that would like to have a voice to look more carefully. There was a lot in that proposal. Um, we view most of what's in there as goals and intentions, um. Thank you for whatever you said tonight, intentions are great, impact is better, we are looking for impact. Uh, but we also recognize the importance of. We have twenty five, twenty six next steps. We understand the importance of looking at. Uh, the board commitment, the financial implications and all of that. So, uh, we heard about some. Good ideas for revisions, so it's going to be a closer look. And we would hope in a couple of months or so, that was our hope, that we could come back to the board. With some thoughts and some, uh, reflections and move it forward.
I would also add, we had some good news, we were all, we were on a call with the department, with the city. Uh, sustainable advocate and the Department of Energy grant that we applied for is, is. Is, it looks like it's going to come through, that is really exciting for our work and that has to do with. Working with Tetra Tech for building evaluation, but also there's a large educational component that'll be funded too. So we're excited that those funds will be available to, um, make this work move.
I guess we're really hoping that the advisory council would be, um, an efficient way to have conversation to make sure that. It's just really, we're understanding of what we're hoping for in the goals.
Do you know when the council's gonna, it goes, decided yet?
We are really, we're waiting for a board approval of the committee, according to Sean, did in touch with him. Would come before you as it is tonight. And then I don't know if we are someone else on the board, isn't it, with the leadership, we've shared with him some proposed members of the committee. Uh, and what we heard in the late spring was it would meet three or four times, maybe each time looking at a component. Uh, giving some input and feedback, so we would hope we're looking at a shorter timeline. Whether or not the committee continues to meet, I guess we'll come out of that recommendation as well. But we would, we do have work that we're already involved in, uh, and would like to be able to have the board support to move it forward.
We can provide some follow up after tonight about dates and more specifics and logistics, keep you all informed, but, okay. Yes.
Yes, the idea I had was to be a board committee, so this is not. Um, a committee that we, we already meet as a committee, right? This was, uh, we heard it as, uh, I use the word ad hoc. Having the opportunity to have, uh, more conversation with board members. Uh, to digest it, like people have referenced, this is not always a saying that we can get into as much dialogue. And so we anticipate that the board is central to the committee.
I would say another exciting component is centering student voice in these conversations, to making sure that we have students in our committee as well.
I need any suggestions about that.
Good, right, and just to add that, um, the sustainability advocates want us to, have to bring this to. The facilities for the, over the past years. And it's not another committee, but it advisory council that includes. Administration staff and the advocates and teachers and students and board members. I know that I, as one board member, look forward to participating on that.
Thank you.
So I know that it's open to the other board members.
I'd like to just reiterate that, um, in June of twenty twenty four, we were really appreciative of the, um. Adoption of the climate action resolution, uh, short statement of intention. And that this climate action plan proposal is to actualize more of what that resolution stated.
Further questions, comments? So my understanding at this point is that we are just voting on the motion, but that motion would not. Clear, it would not include the membership of the council at this point. So just, we're creating a council but not populating it. I would put out a call for volunteers, we would discuss at a future meeting, so if you could bowl, bowl that over. Those interested, so are we ready to move the question? So all those who are yes. Okay, that carries in. Now we move on to the actual field trips. Um, I think we have to, it's one of the time with resolutions are written, but, uh, first is. Uh, resolution for a field trip to Morocco. Could I, uh?
Okay, I move to approve the international field trip to Morocco from March twenty seventh, twenty twenty sixth until April fourth, twenty twenty six.
Second. Second by Jacob. Excuse me?
We, we saw a presentation on this, uh, I think that last spring.
Yes.
And, uh, yeah. Been going on for a while.
Going on for a while.
It's a great opportunity.
Very exciting trip, yeah.
For my own and public knowledge, this paid for entirely like via scholarships specifically for. How, how, how does it find out?
So I only just really simply answer that they presented a pretty detailed finance plan, uh, but I guess what it suggests is, I think that is, you can pull it off YouTube, I don't. My memory is weak enough, I don't want to.
combination of fundraising, you know, um, individual student.
But it, it takes, I've done a great job of making sure everyone wishes to go. Yeah, I just underscore Jacob, like, you know, without remembering the details, they, Dr. Brown's right, they were very good at it to make sure that no one was excluded for financial. Okay. Okay, all questions? All yeses? Okay. So this unanimously in favor, and we move around, uh, the globe. To the next destination of Vietnam.
Alright.
Uh, students are world travelers. So we have a motion for. I'm gonna again go to Adam.
I move to approve the international field trip to Vietnam from March twenty sixth, nope, I just said this, no, that's right. From March twenty sixth, twenty twenty six until April seventh, twenty twenty six.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Jacob, any discussion?
Do you all remember where in the world? That, that is.
Uh, which class is, um, the Vietnam trip? Connected with.
It's a club and it started, it originated with Mr. Tori, who had the sustainability interest and. But it is a club.
And Mr. Tori now lives in Vietnam.
So are we all invited to his house?
I would, uh, just comment on both of these trips, uh, to teachers in the room, that's a lot of effort, a lot of extra effort. Goes into planning these trips, is a lot, means a task. And, uh, I just commend the identification of teachers who. Worked to make this happen. So if there's no further discussion, call the question, all in favor. Okay, that is unanimous. Okay. And we now move on to a. Motion to approve athletic murders.
I move to approve athletic murders with Lansing and Truantsburg Central School Districts for girls' ice hockey. For the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
So I just think so, so, so folks understand, I'm gonna say what I think this does and I'm gonna invite. Uh, I think those with more experience should correct me, but this is an attempt to, uh, have some cooperation across school districts. Who allow young people to participate in sports, uh, where they would otherwise be unable to because of the size of numbers. Size of districts and the number of interested students, so I, I think this is an opportunity just to allow more kids to participate in more sports, am I, I get that approximately right? Thank you, uh, these are mutually beneficial murders and I can underscore, we have been. We have been adamant that, uh, no current I T F P student can lose a particular spot or not be allowed to participate because of the murders. So. Win win.
And, um, and families in the other school districts have to provide transportation. For the students here, and this is what, it's like T S T posts, which we're all part of, but. And we're having these discussions around regionalization, this is a type of example of that.
Yeah, thank Karen for making that tie and talk about. Finding efficiencies, this is an example of one, so it's, it's good plan in my view. Recall the question. Okay, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. So we now have a discussion about capital project. Have some slides, I. And maybe I, uh, while we're. Hiding in the hall. Thanks for that. This is a conversation that we're bringing to the board that, that, uh, has already happened a bit and many, the finance and facility committee meeting. Um, and at that time, I, we, we talked about some challenges and some challenges that we noted back last spring, that could be potential challenges for us. One was about staffing, it. I, I'm sure most folks know, but it takes a lot to put together an election or any type of vote in this community, with the multiple sites we have. Um, as Tricia knows, and I, again, that's why I say thank you to Tricia every time. Um, it takes multiple people to put together an election or any type of a voting process. And when there are staffing challenges or transition, what we've had in the board office and other spaces, and super teams office also. Um, that makes putting on these elections that he votes very challenging, we've had that, so. That's something that, um, has happened most recently, so it will make it very hard for us to have capital project vote in December. You couple that with the way that we went back and looked at how we communicate and how often we communicate in the meetings we out, we host. And where we go, when we're sharing information and engaging about the capital project, it's a month, well, month long process. Um, we've run out of time to start that process and do it well.
So at the finance facility committee meeting, um, with, uh, Ms. Glauw was talking about timelines and Dr. Bryman, and we talked about it in other committees as well. We were recommending at that time that we postpone this until May, to give us some time to tighten up on the staffing pieces. And to engage in the kind of community dialogue that we know is needed. So with that, I don't know, Chris, maybe you want to share that timeline that we have talked about before and, uh, put in front of the board.
Yeah. Thanks to get into just a little bit more detail, thank you for the summaries.
If you folks just introduce yourself for the record, just so people watch it at home.
My name is Christopher Glauwitz, I am a vice president at Tetra Tech Architects and Engineers and. Project teams, thank you for the opportunity, I have two children who are graduates of I C S D as well.
Uh, Dan Bryan, Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, yeah, so this is a previous schedule we had talked, been talking about, um, with regard to a vote in December of, um, twenty twenty five. I'll just point out the green bar at the bottom there, uh, that Dr. Brown was speaking to in terms of like the number of months of communication to the voters. Um, that could be improved upon when we consider the scope of work, which we've. Had, you know, many reviews of, um, and. The groups of folks that you like to communicate with, right? So when we, we, um, helped you with your capital project referendum in twenty nineteen. There was a lot of reach out, there were, um. TA meetings, there were open houses, there were various opportunities to, um. Communicate in person, electronically, mailing, various different ways to be sure that people knew the basic facts of. What was going to come before them, um, in a vote.
The only thing I would add would, would be that if we have a December vote, we'd only have two months. The message after the committee, which is a really short, uh, timeframe for us.
So a revised schedule that, um. That, uh, would propose having the capital project. Referendum vote coincide with the state mandated May nineteenth budget vote. Uh, which, you know, currently happens the, uh, I guess the third Tuesday of May. Always in New York State, um, so aligning that gives a longer period of time for communications to happen. Again, the green bar there, you can see it's much longer, um, that, that. Um, I think will, will set everyone up for better success in communicating the details of this and. Making sure everybody's clear on, on what's being proposed.
This plan would give us seven months, uh, would also give us election, election cost savings as well. We wouldn't have a standalone election, we would, we would pair with existing, existing elections we have in there.
That's basically it, are there questions that, clarifications?
Oh, not, not a question, just a comment that, um, when we thought about December before, it looked good. And then when you come back from summer break and start moving. Was it feasible for us to do this?
It's, it's also not just the communication timeframe, it's the training of the, uh, the people are gonna run the elections. If I'm looking at Tricia, it's all that work to get ready for a standalone election, which is considerable work, so I wanna, um. You know, I want to validate that as well.
Okay, uh, so. Okay, we have, um. Recommended action of moving to pretty big postponement, I don't actually see a resolution. Uh, but I, I, do we need resolution, can we just?
Yeah, that was my question over here, uh, so I'll have a bunch of, the board needs to vote to delay something that you haven't voted to approve. So. Not hope to approve it, you know, what have you voted to approve?
Who's supposed to learn now on September twenty eighth?
Oh, we didn't do that open, okay.
At that time, we were supposed to vote for it to go to S D Q R A.
Secret, secret.
Yeah, yeah, so we didn't, we never voted. In the springtime to say let's do it December versus, I don't know, we discussed it.
Okay, so I think no vote is necessary then. Alright, alright. Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
So we have two. Um, remaining items. Dr. Brown, was the. Were you gonna, you gonna feel these or was someone else on your team to feel these? Okay, I think, I think you've touched on eleven eight already.
Level eleven seven for.
Yeah, I'm sorry, eleven.
Level seven, I T A negotiations update, I'm, I will be humbly requesting that just be an item on the board agenda for me and my team to give updates on for the. Forable future until we get a, this business. Um, tonight, not much of an update, other than I know we have some session, we had a session scheduled for next week. Um, and not to disappoint myself, which I never wish to do, but I do, in respect for my colleague, Miss Sinar, who's been the lead negotiator for the I T A. Just wanted to make sure I clarify some things that I've heard, some even I've heard tonight, uh. We were. We were happy to, uh, honor the request from the I T A and Miss Sinar last, had the last session to halt, I believe the words were, halt the negotiations. And we continue, while I work all summer, my team works all summer. Um, I don't think many of the members of the negotiating team are working in the summer, so I'm assuming that it. She said it, but the pause was for the post half the summer break. Um, these, like, Mr. Father said, either. Complex negotiations, they take some time while we've been very public. There's a lot we can't say, but we knew this would take some time. So the pause was something that we were happy to want. Um, and we knew then that we will pick up when returning from our summer recess and breaks. Now again, with much respect to my colleague, Miss Sinar. I was on the email thread, we were negotiating or talking about with them to have our first session. Um, and I heard tonight, there has been a post postponement, the first session when talking about calendars was scheduled to be in October. So for anyone who thinks that there's been a second that's been canceled or postponed, we scheduled the first session to take place in the beginning of October. And that will take place next week. So I'm looking forward to that conversation next week, so I'm looking forward to the negotiations we plan for them to be public at the end. And hopefully I can get some more updates the next time the board comes together. Um, and hopefully we have an agreement very soon.
Could, could ask a question, um. I, I know the board has abilities to go to the negotiations, um. I, I, I'm just wondering like if. Again, some, I'm learning all the rules and regulations, well, it's, uh. Uh, it's like, i- i- is it possible for? The course receive a presentation or something, or like, is there, is there a way to, I don't know. Have better dialogue, uh, I mean, I, I, I love to be involved more than I like, I know. I don't think I'm allowed. And I, I also I think it would be good, like, I heard. You know, people say that, you know, they have different numbers, I know that, I, I try to follow all the meetings and sometimes I can follow, sometimes I can't. Um, so I, I just. Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know exactly what I'm asking, I'm just wondering if there's a way to, to, um. For me to be more involved or for you to be more involved, if that's impossible.
I think that goes to my personal request to have this on the agenda for the upcoming board. And as we get into the negotiations and as we're prepping, as we're sharing information with that community, receiving information on I P A, I think it's, um, possible for. The way would be set the ground, we will stay consistent with the ground rules. And I think you can have conversations about where we are, um, at that time going forward.
So, so we're limited by the ground rules that were set by both sides?
That's one limitation. And as we've seen, it's just, we're in this local dialogue about. What we're endeavoring to do and what they're asking, um, so that's, that's the conversation that has been happening, probably think. If my perspective can, can continue, but now the topic of our turn is about what we can and cannot say, uh, look at the ground.
Now, I see on our website that we have, um, dates of future negotiation sessions. And I do recall seeing even up to a month ago that. It said that there's a pause due to the summer break and will resume in October, now we added. Dates that is a, because both sides have now. Have forgotten to what the dates are, so the next two months.
So just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly, so. Um, both parties of this negotiation agreed to pause, the reason you just said, we're gonna continue where we left off. Uh, the negotiation has not failed, it's just continuing, is that we have a correct?
I'm not sure how we're, uh. I'm just not sure, I guess, parliamentary or Robert's style, I just know the same that like. There's, like, folks in the class need to be actively. Disagreeing with the notion that there weren't negotiations scheduled a few weeks ago, I'm not sure how, like, whoa. I, I just don't know, uh, I don't, cause I know we don't like invite people, I don't, I know.
Yeah, I, I know that we did have publicly on our website that there was a pause for the summer. In that negotiations were, so we didn't, we didn't have all the dates and the schedule that we have now.
My effect.
I think I wish you could help with that, please.
So, we did pause our negotiations, oh, sorry, Catherine Sinar, I T A president. On June twelfth. We did pause our negotiation. We penciled in a September eighteenth. Date to resume. In August, I reached out to the team and said, hey. Here are possible dates, including starting with that September eighteenth date. We were then. Told that September is very busy, there are many challenges, we can agree to all of these other dates, but we cannot agree to September eighteen. So we were tentatively scheduled for September eighteenth. We will begin next week. We are still in pause and we will resume negotiations. In the same, my understanding is in the same style, I just got a Zoom link today. But September, we, when we left on June twelfth, we left believing that we would begin. That we would resume negotiations on September eighteenth. And it was not our choice to not resume since on September eighteen.
And so. That's three weeks and. Um, started, when was it, that word?
January.
Yeah, yeah, right, so we're nine months in, we're in our nine month process, we're, we're three weeks behind, we might, what ideally want to be at, uh, to begin with. I would, yeah, okay. Okay. Is that clear to everyone where we are? Uh, so do you want to say?
Wait, I'm sorry, just one minute, I agree with the notion that we should make this a recurring part of the agenda. Is there anything we need to do collectively or that's okay?
Noted, maybe we'll do so. So Brian, you have anything further to say on eleven eight?
Communication board, yeah. Yes, uh, cause I think this is an opportunity to clarify for our community, um. Because in our community and others, there's a lot of conversation about threats. Credible versus non credible, so as I could, just maybe should talk about that, and then when we communicate and when we do not communicate. Um, and I, it's hard to say, and probably going to be hard for people to hear. I mean, Dr. Bryman knows as well. Uh, we do daily threat assessments. Every day, there is some type of, uh, with a school district of thousands of young people and thousands of employees in the city as large as ours. Um, there are things that are said, there are things that are emailed, there are things that are done that prove, that reveals a threat. And we have very tight protocols about how to look at set threats, and we take every single one of them seriously, every one. And that's why we were up most of the night. Uh, a five year old saying, I'm gonna get you, or I'm gonna blow the school up. Is considered a threat, we need to investigate, and we collaborate with law enforcement. We talk to families, we visit homes, we do all those things, an email to me saying, I know where you live. It's considered a threat. And it's turned over to the local authorities. An email to one of my team members and me saying, I won't, I won't forget this, I'm gonna get you, it's considered a threat. We have to go through a process. And having visited homes, law enforcement getting involved, every single one. Most of them, fortunately, are deemed to be not credible. Whether it's a five year old or community member or someone from outside of our state or country. That's a non credible threat. We, as part of our existing protocol, while everyone is on a case by case basis, as part of our existing protocol, current protocols. Becomes the environment of law enforcement and other authorities, we don't communicate to the entire community about non credible threats. That can create an environment where people go unsafe, it can. Feed rumors and misinformation, and frankly, as I've seen over the last week, um, communication about a non credible threat can look like something we've not sent in their baby to school. So that's why. But however, there have been times when we communicated about non credible threat, particularly when. It's been reported in media and social media is a frenzy and people want to hear about. Something, and we, as we did this past weekend, it was not a credible threat, it was received by not only, which is part of our. Community, but across our state, from what I know, and across the country. And it, we know the address it came from and we're getting close to determining the source. Now there are credible threats. As long as we receive them. And we have communicated. With our community stakeholders when those are credible threats, and we work with law enforcement to provide additional support. And at times, as folks in this community, about my time, I've seen, sometimes there are threats, that's a credible threat, and we have been working with law enforcement, like we do all the time. And we communicate, but I just want to make sure folks know, yes, there are case by case basis. And we will always communicate when there's a credible threat, after going through an assessment that includes many more people than just me and Dr. Bryant. And when they're non credible. We are not communicating to folks because of the reasons I've said. However, there are cases when we do communicate about non credible threats from various vehicles. Uh, but this is tough, y'all, I get it, and there's no perfect science to it. But I've been asked a number of times over the last few days about protocols when it comes to communication about this thing, and I carry that weight, and each one of them is serious for me. And I've heard people saying, you don't take it serious till we lack a test. You take them all serious. Every single one of them, and it keeps us up at night, thank you, Dr. Bryman, thank you to the law enforcement, those who work with us every day, thanks to our building principals who answer that cell phone call. When we call, when it is dealt. Anyway, questions, thoughts, reactions to our protocols that accompany it. On this particular topic, we talk about communication protocol in other areas, but this is what I want to make sure.
So the goal is to, uh, 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 sometimes not saying, uh, is to not amplify. A voice when a careful review by law enforcement has been to be non credible, is that the idea?
Combination, as I've been advised, um. Amplifying the voice, it can lead to more of it happening. Uh, it can create misinformation and rumors in the community, it can create fears with folks who may. Have fears already or doubt it, and he's saying that, so there are a number of reasons why you wouldn't communicate every non credible threat. Um, and then when there is one, it's like, so, we've been about, and that's why we have had that.
But I definitely understand people want selfless to clear why we don't. Amplify every voice.
Dr. Brown, I think that one of the complicating factors this time was that, that there was coordination with other districts around here and. Everybody makes. Different decisions, and that makes it really difficult, even if their decisions are. No less right or maybe. More wrong than any decision that we make, can you talk a little bit?
You need one this time, um, for us, um, and there was a conversation and we're a follow up conversation, then we're. Thinking through how we'll be done the next time with the regional submissions, about how to be that, be tighter about it. Oh yeah, that complicated thing, and there were the joint communication that was sent out from our district superintendent. And we are talking to the communication team, that next time you may send that one out to folk, like, there are some things we're learning, but that was a unique one for us as a, as a region. Uh, because one district did it, handled it very differently than the rest of the region, which happened that particular, and you got to also remember there are different law enforcement agencies that we're working with. In some cases, they work with the sheriff department, we work with the police department, sometimes, often times we work with FBI, so. There's so many folks involved with this, and at times, people using different words.
But I think, I think also in this case, you know, this was publicized in an online publication, and there was an article that was written about it, and the article wasn't. Totally clear about whether there was or was not a threat. So I think in this particular case, it was good that the district decided to put out some communication, because I think there were a lot of questions in the community. Because it got publicized, I think if it was a quiet, non credible threat, we'd have to be, you know, discuss. Yes. It's all safe.
Just to inquire, I, I forget who was during the public commentary at some other point, I think it was raised the idea that administrator Pat Novitz, but not since you're. Did that activate or?
We did speak to administrative. Um, about the communication of going out and seeing people, just to be aware, and if there were questions that came to them, they would have some information to point to. On the west side, definitely, this was Friday afternoon as well, um, that we were in communication with, about the communication coming out from the computer screen. In case someone had asked.
Right, so the community.
So no, no communication at all, educated, was community, was that one, at the time.
Okay, and so if that. It's like moving forward, would that still be the practice, and if so, just your rationale?
Well, well, what do you brief that, um? I do wish to share, there are other times when the district and other school districts are reporting or sharing information. That I tend to send a text or an email to the commissary, it's just of an FYI. Um, this is not the only situation we tend to do that, so should be sure that same communication heads up to everyone. Um, this is not the only situation we tend to do that, so should be shared that same communication heads up to everyone, um, it's something we're, we're on pattern.
And for what it's worth, I. Um. Having served as a principal, I'm sure it's a totally different level at the superintendency, but I do definitely recognize. It is real when you describe that there are a ton of threats, that the vast majority of them are incredible, and they can sometimes be a. It can sometimes be a damn if you do and damn if you don't, um, communication, so. I'm glad that our response is like, here's what happened, we're learning from it, and it's.
And this is getting close to snow day call. And making decisions about that. Thank you.
So, uh, for the questions, that brings us to completion of section eleven and we come along section twelve. Future. Other discussion items and future discussion items, members wish to report. See none, uh, we can move on to. Item thirteen. Are we ready to go there?
Do you want to, do you want to just announce the three things in, uh? That's going point one, the upcoming bits of importance.
Well, point one, uh, we get some importance, you got online changes, okay.
Uh, the upcoming bits of importance, I'll just do that, uh, on Tuesday, October seventh at five P M, we have a policy work session.
Oh.
Um, and then Tuesday, uh, October seventh at six P M, we have a H R work session, and also upcoming Wednesday, ten eight, we have. A five P M audit work session.
And we have, uh, a, a, a next week, next time today, is our.
Oh, yes, and the location will be in the board, in this one, right?
The I T A negotiations.
This we have it set up to this, well, I don't, I'm not sure, let me, uh, Pat, what do you think?
I think it's a very important, but.
And that's good because that.
But that.
Yeah. Let us get back, I think it's in, with your, lower york as well.
By what, yeah.
Those sessions, yeah.
I want to think about this, have a discussion about that, yeah, all right, but it is gonna be next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Somewhere. All right, we can start, thank you, everyone.
Yeah.